Let's call the ordinary City of St. Charles Council meeting for Monday, August 18th. Roll call, please.
Besner?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Sokitis?
Here.
Fulk?
Here.
Bongard?
Here.
Munz?
Here.
Spellman?
Here.
Gamm? Patrilla?
Here.
Warball?
Here.
Okay, all right, just for everybody's information, we have two council members who are appearing via Zoom. We have Alderman Besner and Alderman Patrilla. I've been advised, just based upon their communication, that there's going to be a delay when we reach out. So just expect when they don't answer right away, it's not that they've disappeared. It's just that it takes a little bit of time for them to respond. So the reason I do that is because I want to start by asking Alderman Patrilla to give tonight's invocation. David, everyone please stand.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. We thank you for our many blessings. We are especially grateful for the opportunity to live and participate in this democracy of ours where differences can be resolved with dialogue. Tonight, we pray for wisdom and courage, the wisdom to see beyond our individual needs and interests, and to focus on the community needs and interests, and the courage to act for our common good. Amen.
Thank you. And now I'd like to ask Alderman Fulk, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, free, open, and liberty to all.
Okay, first of all, I want to wish everybody a good evening. Thanks for being here with us tonight. We're going to start out tonight by issuing a proclamation. And before we do that, I want to introduce the members who are here in support of that proclamation. We have Colonel Duane Butel, we have Colonel Jay Wyatt, we have John Westfall, we have Joanne Surratt, and we also have Vanessa Bellasota, who is the MBS Post 503 Community Leading Team. We also have Mr. Catella here as well. So thank you for being, thank you for being here today. We are here, and today I am going to read a proclamation that's entitled Constitution and Citizenship Day 2025. And the proclamation reads as follows. Wherein, U.S. Congress, by joint resolution on February 29th, 1952, honors the timeless principles enshrined in our U.S. Constitution by designation, on designating September 17th as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day. Also, by joint resolution on August 2nd of 1956, the President proclaimed the week beginning September 17th and ending on September 23rd of each year as Constitution Week. Whereas, we are called upon to display the U.S. flag on government buildings during Constitution Week, and the U.S. Department of Education requires all institutions receiving federal funding to teach students the history of the U.S. Constitution during that week. Whereas, the United States citizens, as United States citizens, we understand that the framers of the Constitution laid out a set of basic principles to equip us with all that was necessary to self-govern and guarantee our freedom. Whereas, our U.S. Armed Forces have sworn to uphold and protect the Constitution, flag, and country in their military oath. Whereas, a team of veteran leaders felt compelled by their role to initiate the annual Constitution Day celebration in 2020 to engage our community in peaceful, nonpartisan, patriotic activities, handing out pocket constitutions and flags with events that advance funds to benefit local and disabled veterans with paddle-wheel boat rides on the Fox River and providing resources for the St. Charles Veteran Post. Whereas, we plan to engage an ever-growing number of St. Charles area residents and stakeholders, united in a purely patriotic celebration of the U.S. Constitution and our U.S. citizenship. We recognize the observance of the Sixth Annual U.S. Constitutional Day slash Citizenship Day 2025, that launched on September 12th with a 9/11 First Responders Memorial Field of Flags, a ceremony on September 13th, and Patriots Trivia Night on September 17th, which is the Federal Constitution Citizenship Day of 2025. Now therefore, I, Clint Hall, Mayor of St. Charles, do hereby proclaim September 17th of 2025 as Constitution Day, Citizenship Day, in the City of St. Charles. Just a couple notes. I was at the presentation on Saturday. It was an absolutely wonderful event outside of the Boy Scouts over on Route 31. If everybody drove by or you continue to drive by, it's filled with flags, and then we had a great ceremony led by Colonel Wyatt with a great presentation by Colonel Butel. And so I think that the goal is going to be to get more people there, and especially younger people there next year. I didn't know if anybody wanted to speak. I know that I do want to turn it over to Ms. Bellasota so that she can talk a little bit about Trivia Night. But Colonel Wyatt, Colonel Butel, anything that you'd like to say today?
Yes. Please. That might be the case. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hall, and distinguished members of the council and members here. On behalf of the veterans of St. Charles, we'd like to say thank you very much for the support that you've provided to us, these veterans, throughout the past several years, many years. It's always a pleasure to come to the council here. Also, First Responders, outstanding ceremony on 9/11 at Morton. And thank you very much for making the veterans a part of that also. But more importantly, against the Constitution, it's a foundation of this nation, and we want to make sure that in St. Charles, that this foundation does not pass to the side that is called at the lowest levels in the elementary, middle schools, high schools, and at the college level. So that's the whole purpose of why we have the Support Constitution Day. It's a foundation of what the younger generation will grow up and understand. And without understanding what the basis of this nation was defined by the forefathers, we have nothing. So the legacy needs to continue on. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And on a light note, this coming Wednesday, we have Patriots Trivia Night at the St. Charles Motorcycle Museum to test our knowledge of the Constitution and some of the foundation principles, some of the characters, the founding fathers. It's a lot of fun. It's done by Captain Andy Ballaspass, a past post commander. He's coming back from Nashville, Tennessee, where he moved to do this five rounds of trivia. And Andy, the owner of the museum, has Eastern European comfort food. He's going to have a tent outside with Polish sausage and stuffed cabbage and sauerkraut. So for the Lithuanians in the room like myself, I can't wait for that. But I have an invitation for everybody here. They're also in the lobby for Wednesday night. The other purpose of the night is we have a silent auction, and this year, we have a record number of 26 items, including what the captain of the paddle-wheel boat donated, a two-person guided fishing trip to Northern Illinois. So we have some really cool experiences and hope to see some of you down the road. Put together a trivia team. It's free, there's no entry, and we have prizes for all the rounds. We have a lot of other things we'll be doing in between. We have live music, and just want anybody to come. So without further ado, I'll pass out your personal invitation.
Thank you. Thank you. As she passes out, I just, the amount of work and effort that all of you put in, as well as Vanessa on this trivia night, it's very, very appreciated. And so, as she had said, we have a competitive group, and so if you want to get there on Wednesday and compete, again, the cost is right, and the money that's raised goes to a great cause. So again, thank you for coming. You know what? Unfortunately, when we get to public comment, if you wanted to, okay, thank you. All right, next up, Alderman Sokitis, I'm going to ask if you will present the omnibus item for a vote, please.
Yes, I make a motion to approve the omnibus vote as presented tonight. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sokitis?
Yes.
Fulk?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Munz?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Patrilla? Yes.
Warball?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Okay, there is no old business, so I'm now moving on to new business. Presentation for myself to approve the appointment of Dan Lichens to the Police Pension Board. I would like to request the council consider the approval and appointment of Daniel Lichens to the Police Pension Board, with the term expiring April 30th of 2026. Is there a motion?
Motion by Munz?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Munz, second by Spellman. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sokitis?
Yes.
Fulk?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Munz?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Patrilla?
Yes.
Warball?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next item. I am making a recommendation to approve the appointment of Larry Behrens to the Liquor Control Commission. We currently have two openings. Mr. Behrens holds a Bachelor of Science degree in management and business and brings over 50 years of leadership experience. He's held senior roles at major companies, including Air Products and Chemicals, America Gas, AGA Gas, and Taylor Wharton, with responsibilities spanning global sales, business acquisitions, and distributor support across North America, Europe, and Asia. A U.S. Army veteran, Larry served from 1965 to 1971 with the Army Security Division, now part of the NSA. He's a 20-year member and executive committee member of the American Legion Post 75 in Geneva, and works closely with the St. Charles Post on veteran-focused community initiatives. He's eager to bring his business experience with public service dedication to the St. Charles Liquor Control Commission. I also want to let you know that when he indicated he was interested, I asked the commissioner members, Bob Gemm and David Patrilla, along with City Administrator Heather McGuire, to meet with him, to be able to ask questions, get answers, and then to let me know I was not part of that, to just get their feedback as to whether they believe Mr. Behrens would be a good recommendation. I did receive positive feedback, and they all indicated that they would recommend him to me, and that's why I'm recommending them to the council. But if anybody has any questions about how that process and how we went through it. So could I have a motion and a second for his approval, please?
Munz moves.
Second.
Munz, Warball, second. Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sokitis?
Yes.
Fulk?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Munz?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Patrilla? Yes.
Warball?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, moving on to committee reports. Alderman Weber, anything for government operations?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Alderman Bongard, anything for government services?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Alderman Warball, anything from planning and development? I believe there is one item.
Yes, C3, yes.
C3, okay. So three is the motion to approve an ordinance, amending ordinance number 2005-Z9, Brownstone PUD, Millstone Row, and granting approval of the PUD preliminary plan for River 504, I'm sorry, 504 row houses. Before we look for a motion in a second, I'm going to ask Russ Colby to come up, and there have been discussions over the last week, and so I believe it was appropriate for Russ to come in and advise the council before we heard a motion in a second.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. The PND Committee recommended approval of the River 504 Row Homes projects with a 5-3 recommendation, and the committee requested staff and the developer review some comments regarding the streetscape design and street trees for the council's consideration. So first, regarding use of brick pavers, these can be utilized on the first street sidewalk with an increase in the public improvement budget of $12,000. Second, tree grates on First Street can be added by shifting the sidewalk around the trees and closer to the building, and four trees can be accommodated through tree grates. The applicant's landscape designer has recommended against the tree grates, because they're not the best environment for tree health or tree longevity. But the developer is willing to install those tree grates but would not warranty the trees. So it would be a city responsibility to maintain those trees going forward, but they would be public trees. And so the cost added to the public improvement budget of those tree grates and trees would be $11,000. Third, staff and the developer reviewed options to reroute the sanitary sewer to try and preserve the Prairie Street Parkway trees. Due to other utilities that are present, there's no location available within the Parkway outside of the street to locate that sanitary sewer. The developer looked at directionally boring the sewer, so not digging it open and installing it, and this was not recommended due to the bedrock depth that's present in that area. So the only other route available to relocate that sanitary sewer would be within the Prairie Street pavement. Installing a sewer in Prairie Street will add some cost and would also require some closure of the street during construction, because the sewer will need to be about 10 feet out from the street curb because of a storm sewer line that's located there. So the closure could be partial, as in a lane, or maybe multiple lanes, depending on the complexity and the depth of the bedrock that they'll be working in. But obviously, any closure to a collector's street like Prairie Street has potential traffic and access impacts, and potentially will limit access to the Prairie Street Bridge. So a sewer design in Prairie Street would still need to be engineered, but there is a route that's available. Alternately, staff had presented some alternatives to either replant the trees, additional trees or with larger trees as a replacement, as opposed to relocating that sewer. The applicants in attendance tonight, J&amp;B Builders, and they would like an opportunity to address the council as well.
Okay, before we give them the opportunity, any questions for Mr. Colby? Mr. Weber?
Yes, Russell, so tell me, if this were to all pass and construction were to go, when would, if we did the Prairie Street route, we wanted them to do the construction on Prairie Street, what would be the timeline? Like, when would that start?
So that would be up to the developer in terms of their construction timeline. No, they can probably speak to that. I know they had some concerns with their schedule going forward if they need to incorporate this change.
Okay, I would like to know, to hear that.
Okay, all right. Any other questions by council before we have the developer step up? Alderman Munz?
I just like to clarify what you were saying about the brick pavers. Can you repeat that portion? And what the cost is and who pays that cost?
Yes, so the brick pavers could be used in place of the concrete sidewalk along First Street. The added additional cost is $12,000, and that cost would be added into the public improvement budget that was presented as a part of the reimbursement incentive for the project.
Thank you.
Okay, Alderman, Alderman person, Spellman?
Sorry, Peter, I know you just said this, but could you recap the tree situation?
The Prairie Street trees?
How are we going to have trees?
So for the Prairie Street trees, if the sanitary sewer remains in the location that's proposed, those trees would need to be removed and replaced. Alternately-
Replaced with similar trees, or smaller trees, or great trees?
So that's an option, that they could plant additional trees, or they could plant larger trees, larger caliper trees in place of those trees. But most likely, if the sewer is to remain in the Parkway and not in the street, those trees would need to be replaced.
Okay, all right. In case there's any other questions after they present, we're going to go ahead and turn it over now. Do you want to step up? If you can please state your name, yeah, come on up. Thank you. If you can please state your name for the record.
My name is Julie Saliers, and I'm with J&amp;B Builders. And we have been pushing to try to get this project started this year. Due to uncertainties in the market with possible tariffs and likely price increases, in addition, we have two prospective buyers that are really eager for us to start. And if we're required to redesign the sanitary line, it's going to be very difficult to start the project before the year ends and the weather changes. This will impact the whole project and could make it more unreliable. That's our biggest concern, the timing, to have to redesign. I understand not wanting to remove existing trees, and we would attempt to try to spade them and replant them, but I don't think that they would survive. So that's why our landscape plan includes three new trees, if they're spaced in relation to the new building. Our landscape designer chose them with future size, health, and diversity in mind. So while in the short term, we're removing these trees, in the long run, we believe the new trees spaced with their layout would really be worth it. We also are willing to add more trees along the Parkway, and we don't intend, we can do a larger-sized caliper tree if the city requested that, so that it wouldn't take that as long for them to grow to mature what is there now.
Thank you. Anybody on council have any questions? Alderman person, Munz?
When you say you're willing to add more trees along the Parkway, do you mean on Illinois, I'm sorry, on First Street or on Prairie Street?
We've already agreed to add the First Street trees and the tree grates, as you guys have requested. We would also add more along Prairie Street, along the Parkway, if we didn't have to move the sanitary line into the street.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alderman Bongard?
Point of clarification, so if the sanitary line being moved is something that we asked, so is the project still going to be able to move forward, or do you think that this, unlikely that you guys will still be able to move?
We're concerned, because if we have to redesign, as I said, we're trying to get it started this year. With weather changing soon, it may push this to not being able to start until the spring or later. And as I said, we have a couple of prospective buyers. We're already giving pricing, and if our pricing changes and increases, which it likely will, it could make it not viable.
All right, let's go ahead and start with Alderman Warball.
Okay, so I didn't have an opportunity to vote at PND, but my concern is, and I appreciate you wanting to replace the trees, but the existing trees that are there are probably 25, 30 years old, very mature. I drove past her three or four times just to ask myself, can I, and I can't remove those trees. I mean, because I know what's going to go there, and it's not going to fit in. It'll be 20, 30 years before it gets to that point again. The second thing is, if we're putting sewer pipes under the ground, and we're going to put trees on top, and if they have to access that sewer line in the future, they're going to cut the trees down again anyway. So to me, logically, it doesn't make much sense to put trees on top of a sewer line that's eventually, it's never going to get to that point. 30 years from now, they're going to cut them down to address potentially some problems. So I understand your concerns. I wasn't aware of this until it came to us at PND that those trees were going to be removed. So if those trees are going to be removed, I'm not going to support this plan. If you're willing to go into the street and work with it, I'll support the plan completely. So that's where I'm at with it.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Weber?
Thank you, Mayor Hall. A couple of questions for staff regarding what Alderman Warball just said. Is there a concern that the trees could affect the sewer line down the road?
So the proposed location of the sewer line is spaced about 10 feet from an existing water main that runs along the end of the sidewalk. That's enough width to plant the tree between the sewer and the water main. There's probably more risk of, you know, a tree being removed to access the water main, because the water main has potential to break and more likely require servicing than a sanitary sewer. But there would be additional utilities then in that Parkway, which there's always a risk that a Parkway tree might need to be removed for utility work.
What, I know you're not at Arborist, but I've seen some reports from Arborist speaking to some of these tree situations. What is the age of the trees that are there right now, if you had to guess?
I would guess they're probably in the 25 to 30-year range that was cited. I believe they were installed when the Brownstone project was first constructed. They were Parkway trees at that time.
Is there trees that you could purchase that are close to that size if they needed to be replaced?
Probably not that approximate size, but you could plant larger trees than we typically see with newly planted Parkway trees.
Like diameter-wise, or what are we talking here, like seven inches, 10 inches?
Yeah, maybe six versus what you might see as a two-and-a-half to three-inch planted Parkway tree.
And then based on what I had asked you before about the construction, the timeline, that could be, she was mentioning getting something re-engineered. The project could start without that being done, couldn't it?
So there's a, the line has to be relocated from within the project site, so that's one of the elements that I think they would want to construct early on in the project, as opposed to coming back and constructing that later.
I mean, okay, so I mean, I'm not a fan of removing mature trees, but aesthetically, if they were to be removed and replaced, I think aesthetically, it could look better with the layout. I'm not a fan of the trees, the grates on First Street. I think that doesn't make any sense at all, but.
Okay, Alderman Bongard? So Russ, hypothetically, this project doesn't move forward, what is the likelihood that a new project that would come by that wouldn't run into the same problem of having to continue utility and being able to work around this?
Yeah, well, it's a function of the relocation of the existing sanitary line, which right now cuts right through the middle of the site. So that has to be located one direction or the other. So if you were to have, it's right through the middle, so if you have a single footprint building, that sanitary line's going to have to be rerouted this direction.
If I'm hearing you correctly, if you have any sort of development there with a single pad that's going to go, you're going to run into the same problem. So if this potential project doesn't move forward, whatever the reason is, and you have somebody six months, 12 months down the line come back, you're going to be in the same spot of those utilities, trying to build something in that. So can you develop the site and save the trees with a footprint like that?
So you'd have to leave an open corridor through the middle of the site where the existing sanitary sewer line is.
Is that likely?
Maybe a 30 to 40-foot corridor through the middle of the site. So that's going to reduce the buildability of the property.
So but again, the likelihood from a development, from a planning standpoint, that you're going to find a potential developer that's going to come in and have a 30 to 40-foot gap in the middle to protect the trees and not touch the lines, the likelihood that if this project can't make it go because of the calendar, that you're going to be able to work around this, where you're not going to run into the exact same challenge of you're going to have to move the line, and there go the trees.
Yeah, it would make the site more difficult to develop from a financial standpoint, because you'd lose that footprint area.
And Mayor, relevant to this discussion too, is the fact that if the sanitary is required to be relocated in the street, it is likely that the developer will encounter bedrock and require a closure of that street while that development is occurring, and certainly that adds some complications and likely significant costs to the development as a whole, which will impact that travel through that corridor while it's being installed.
Alderman Sokitis?
Thank you. Alderman person? You know, St. Charles is a tree city, and I just have trouble removing mature trees when there are other options to do it. There are no other options, I'd probably agree, but we do have options to relocate the lines. So I wouldn't be in favor of this unless we can keep the trees.
Okay, we have Alderman Munz and then Alderman Bongard.
I have two questions. One is about Prairie Street in general. Is that slated to have any kind of construction on it for a line replacement? Is that, could this be combined with any of that?
Not that I'm aware of.
No? Okay. So that's not on schedule?
Five years?
For any other reason? Okay. And then I think the other thing is more of a point that I just want to include in this, and my concerns are less about those trees on that side and more about the fact that we are only building one, two-unit building at a time. And if we were building all of these at once, I think I would be far less concerned about what's happening with the entire footprint of that site. So if, you know, if we could get some sort of assurance from the developer that we were going forward with all of the construction at once, I would feel much more comfortable being supportive of this, based on the changes that they've been willing to make. I'm very appreciative of the fact that they are willing to work with us on those things. But only building one at a time leaves us with a situation where they may only build the one unit, and then could leave us with the open lot afterwards. And then what do we do with that, with one unit, and then, you know, vacant area after that? So just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, Alderman Fulk?
Yeah, can I, what is the likelihood of that happening?
Right now, we depend on two projects that Julie proposed. I am discussing with another individual who would put us at the forward movement of course. The likelihood is we will start three buildings this year, and three buildings, and one after the, I can't guarantee that it all three start. The final number in the project has been decent, and it would only take one quarter to put the force in.
Okay, have you ever, have you ever run a project like this, like very similar to this, and had trouble selling them?
Should he come to the microphone?
Yeah, put a podium for the man.
Yeah.
Thank you. If you could go ahead and identify yourself for the record.
Brian Booy. We have not built multifamily, but we have done commercial development similar to this, actually larger, where we did not run into that issue.
Okay, I think, I don't think anybody up here likes the idea of losing mature trees, but I think it's been very commendable of you guys to come up with some options, and the fact that that place has sat there so long, underdeveloped, I don't know for how many years it really has been there, and I know it's gone through a lot of different footprints. So I'm very appreciative of what you guys are trying to do so we can finish out that land on First Street. As long as you have the confidence that this can get started and get completed, because I do share Alderman Munz's concern of, hey, one goes up and then it's- I do share Alderman Muntz's concern of, hey, one goes up and then it's sitting vacant, but if you feel you have the prospective buyers to get a project done like this, I think that's a good thing for the city.
We would definitely, that would be our interest to move forward through it as quickly as possible.
Okay, I'm looking. So, I'm sorry, just Russ or Derek, so this plan, this passed Plan Commission nine zero and then moved out of P and D at five, just remind you.
Yes, and there was a recommendation from the Plan Commission to install landscape bed planters within two of the street parking spaces in order to install street trees in those areas.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, Alderman Webber, and then we'll come back to Alderman Spelman.
Okay, I was going to ask if I can make a motion to amend this and vote on it, but...
Well, I'm going to go ahead and ask you to defer that.
Yep.
I'm going to start with Alderman Person Spelman.
I was just curious, I'm not saying that we should do this, but how much, do we have any idea of a cost range for how much it would be to move that line that's in the way?
We don't have a cost estimate for that yet. It still needs to be engineered.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to then turn it over to Alderman Webber.
Okay, so with all that being said, I would like to make a motion to approve based on these three conditions. I would like to see the albert paver on First Street because I think it'll match, it'll tie in with what is already there. I don't want, I don't want any, this would be without any trees on First Street because it causes a lot of problems. I would also like to have the trees to be able to be replaced with the largest caliber diameter trees that they can get from a local nursery to be able to, whether it's three or more, I'm not opposed to that, but aesthetically, I think it would look better if it's spaced out better. So, with that, that'd be the motion I'd like to make.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I understand the motion correct.
Yes.
So, first of all, and I'm just going to ask if perhaps Attorney McMahon can help me understand this, but so, the motion that came out of Planning and Development was a motion to approve the ordinance as outlined. Now, can amendment be, do we have to, do we have to ask to approve that motion or can an amendment be made right out of the gate?
So, my recommendation is that first, there's a motion to approve the resolution as is posted. If that motion is seconded, then you can invite the opportunity for an amendment to that motion.
Okay.
Second on the motion to amend, you'd vote on the amendment and go back and vote on the resolution as amended. This council member, Webber, just...
Okay, so procedurally then, Alderman Webber, I'd ask if you withdraw the amendment right now.
Yep, I will withdraw that motion and I will offer up a motion to approve as presented right now.
Second, okay, so there's a motion by Webber and a second by Bongard, now Alderman Webber, correct? Mr. McMahon?
Yes, you can amend your motion.
So, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to amend to have the brick pavers be placed on First Street, not to have the tree grates or trees on First Street, and then to have the trees be replaced with the largest diameter trees that could be purchased from a local nursery.
Okay, I think that that's specific enough, that's on the record, so...
It is, now that amendment needs a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second on Bongard, now we're voting on the amendment.
Now, you're voting on the amendment, Mr. McMahon, correct.
And what does that need to be, what is the passage on an amendment?
A simple majority.
Simple majority, okay, roll call, please.
Professor?
Yes.
Webber?
Yes.
Solcitus?
No.
Fong?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Muntz?
No.
Spelman?
Yes.
Patrilla?
No.
Werbal?
No.
Okay, so the motion to amend carries by a five-four vote.
Correct.
So, now we will take a vote on the motion as amended.
That's correct.
Okay, so roll call.
Professor?
Sorry, yes.
Webber?
Yes.
Solcitus?
No.
Fong?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Muntz?
No.
Spelman?
Yes.
Patrilla?
No.
Werbal? No.
Okay, the motion as amended carries by a five-four vote. Okay, thank you very much. All right, next up, I'll return to public comment. Mr. Catala, I believe that you had indicated...
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, my name is Anthony...
You can quit, yeah, go ahead.
Roger that. Hello, my name is Anthony Catala. I reside at 1101 South 10th Street here in St. Charles, Illinois. I would also like to state for the record that my name is Captain Chaplin Anthony Catala of the United States Volunteers Joint Service Command. I still am in uniform. I will never hang that uniform up, never in the trial of a thousand years. You know, a happy memory of mine here is on July 17th, 1989, as a young man graduated high school and on his way to college, I so impressed the mayor with my Voice of Democracy speech from the VFW that year. I spoke it here. I addressed it to the people at the Memorial Day Ceremony as a 19-year-old young man, and I so impressed the mayor that he had me deliver it right here. And the title of the speech was "The Future of America is the Destiny of the World," and I still have that speech today and it's the basis for many of the speeches that I write, which I hope sometime, some way to have an opportunity to speak before audiences. I should like to say just a few quick points. In 2023, 24 school year, I had the pleasure, peaceful, happy opportunity to teach the Constitution to a fifth grade students in a private school, and it was very, very much enjoyable. I brought them through the whole document. And I think some of the, just a few points that I want to mention is that a military, we had my fellow veterans here, myself included. What I want people to understand is that a military person is an, is a public office holder. He or she takes the constitutional oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States, and it is the soldier alone who makes his breast stand between himself and his country's foes. But, of course, we have the great tradition of the military being dependent upon and subservient to the civil power. That was the idea of George Washington. He took his uniform off and became our president in civilian clothes, the president, commander in chief of the armed forces, but is himself a civilian. However, he did put his uniform back on to suppress the Whiskey Rebellion in 1793, and James Madison, as commander in chief, was the first, is the only so far commander in chief ever to command forces in the field, even though he was not a commissioned officer but the commander in chief. And this brings us to the idea of the concept of the citizen soldier, which I believe myself to be. I have served in the military, active duty, reserve, and guard, and in these volunteer state defense forces, one for Indiana, and currently, as I mentioned, for the United States Volunteers. We have a rich history that goes back to the War of 1812, and Theodore Roosevelt was a United States volunteer. He charged up San Juan Hill as the commander of the first U.S. Volunteer Cavalry. But, I just want, as I come to my conclusion, I just want to say that the idea of the citizen soldier, though we have the separation between the civil and military authorities of the government, both work together, and a man can serve nobly in the military and then honorably in public life, like perhaps as did Dwight D. Eisenhower. And lastly, I would also like to say, many people think that the Constitution establishes the idea of the separation of church and state. It does not. The phrase, the separation of church and state, is nowhere in the Constitution. But, I'll tell you what is in the Constitution's First Amendment, is the free exercise of religion and Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion. Now, when I was a young man, I thought, why, doesn't Congress respect religion? Simply means that there is no nationally government-funded religion in order to be a citizen of the United States. But, every citizen of the United States has their religious right, particularly in the military, provided by the chaplain corps, to express their religious faith. And so, we have the freedom of religious expression. And the separation of church and state is, was in a letter by Thomas Jefferson to his friend, a Baptist minister, who was concerned about his religious freedom and his flock's religious freedom. And Jefferson wanted his people to be assured that they had the sanction of the government to be, to freely exercise their religion. And that is why I want to say lastly, that the Constitution provides for the godly influence, and without the godly influence, this nation is doomed. With the godly influence, this nation shall survive, and its history will be as the path of the just, which is as a shining light that shineth more and more unto the perfect day. God bless you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Nick Smith. I live at 407 Park Avenue in St. Charles. We're going to slide from the Constitution to grocery stores. I know this is normally a grievance podium, but I just wanted to say I've been traveling all summer and I finally got over to Whole Foods. I just wanted to say to everybody that's up here presently and in the past and the city staff, well done. Store is fabulous. The employees are just phenomenal. Let it be the spark to really, you know, I think get things going even more in that area. And if you're an oyster lover, the pro tip is that if you order oysters from the fishmonger, they will actually open them for you and you can continue on chopping and come back, and they're already shucked. So, anyways, well done, great, great, great for St. Charles. I mean, really, really, really nice. So, thank you. Thank you for your hard work and your dedication and that.
Great to see you, thank you so much. Just a couple of additional items. River cleanup is this Saturday at Pearson Creek Park. Community event is open to all ages and abilities and you can register on the River Corridor's website. Fox Valley Marathon is this Sunday. Anybody up here running the marathon or the half? Any family members? Any staff? All right, we have one person back there, so the half or the full? All right, good for you. So, it's a fantastic event. It's so much fun to see everybody come and run. So, we're not running, but go out and cheer people on. You're going to see lots of Saints and North Stars out there running and lots of different organizations volunteering as well. North Homecoming Parade was held this last weekend. They also, I think, beat Geneva 10 to 7, so it was a successful homecoming weekend. Loved the fact that when we went downtown, all the storefronts windows were painted. I know lots of smiles and the parade was absolutely fantastic. The Saints Homecoming is coming up on Friday, September 26th, and so, again, just so much fun to be out there and see all that. City is participating in State Senator Don DeWitt's Coat Drive that begins at the end of the month. New and gently used coats for people of all ages that would be accepted and dropped off at the municipality lobby, September 29th through October 13th. Couple other things before we recognize birthdays. One is the fire department held their open house. I was just in absolute awe of the event, perfect weather. They had the different, the different events that I saw is they had people and kids learning how to put out fires with small hoses. They had fire extinguisher demonstrations. They had a burn house example. They had a diving team example. They had the jaws of life being used. It was unbelievable event. So, the fire department on that day was a great ambassador for the city of St. Charles as they were on 9/11 as well. So, thank you. Couple things, we have a birthday today, today, Alderman Muntz, happy birthday to you. Can we sing happy birthday?
I would rather.
All right, well, that...
Thank you.
We'll let Alderman Bongard do that. Director Bill, Director Hannah, September 22nd, he's not here, and then Alderman Bongard on October 3rd. Yes, look forward to it. Fantastic. So, anything else from the council?
I just wanted to mention that on this past Saturday, I missed the, well, I missed the fire department the prior Saturday, but this past Saturday, I volunteered with a few members of the Housing Commission on the Habitat for Humanity House. It was a really great experience. I only hit my thumb once with the hammer, and we spent the day out there and it was, we built the garage, so we weren't actually working on the house, but didn't start out looking like a garage, and by the time we left, it was a garage. So, it was, it was pretty neat. I won't be doing that at my house because I need someone to supervise me, but it was really rewarding and we can volunteer to go over and do that anytime. So, I think we can see Ellen in Russ's department if we want a link to sign up for that at any point in time, if anybody wants to do that.
Fantastic. Thank you for sharing. Anybody else? All right, there is no executive session, so can I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
All right, motion by Werbal, second by Spelman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, and our city council meeting is adjourned. I'll now turn it over to Alderman Webber.